Good evening, members of county council as well as Williamsburg County citizens and those that are joining us via social media. Sound check, I guess the sound check is good for us on social media, I got thumbs up. All right, remember citizens at this time if you need to, you may use our teleconference line, that line is 877-309-2073, the access code is 590-380-589. We are open to the public for a maximum of 25 people in chambers, which means we will not be accepting any public comment via any of the social media or our teleconference line. At this time, we're going to officially open our public hearing to discuss the public's input with regard to identifying the communities interested as components of redistricting in Williamsburg County. Each group will have approximately one to three minutes to speak in regard to this, but at this time, we do have members from the state that are in-house that will be there to share how this will go about and ask any questions of them if you need to do so. When any citizen is prepared to speak or ask a question, we ask that you move to the podium, identify what district you are in, and then state your question. Any questions? All right. The gentleman from our state, you can please come in and identify yourselves, introduce yourselves to members of council and the citizens of Williamsburg County.
Thank you, madam chair, members of council. My name is Frank Rainwater. I am the executive director of the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office. I have with me tonight Mr. Paul Athie from our office. We are happy that you've asked us to help you as an agency to help you with redistricting. In the past, some of you are familiar with our former director, Mr. Bobby Bowers, he had done this for a number of years. Bobby is, he passed away two years ago, and so we lost a great person here in the state of South Carolina, and I hope, but I hope we can continue to provide you the same excellent level of service that he did. What I'd like to do tonight is to educate not only you, but your members of the audience and those on social media what redistricting is. There are some things that have changed since this was done 10 years ago, I'm trying to bring you up to speed on some things that are different, some things you need to take into consideration. In the big picture, our office has worked with the census for the number of years, we do a lot with precinct, we help you vote a registrations office. But with the changes in redistricting law this year, there's much more of a burden on council to make sure what they're doing, make sure you understand the limits on that, some of the requirements. Ultimately, this is your plan, you have to be comfortable with this, and we'll talk about some of the differences, but this definitely involves community input and discussion, so you know, just as a citizen of the state, I appreciate what council is doing to allow for the communities to talk about. So let me go through our report, which is on there, on your screen, and I'm gonna refer to a couple of pages here, just kind of highlight what redistricting is about. But on page, on page one here, on this page, we kind of, excuse me, page two, excuse me, I had the wrong page. Page two, we're gonna talk about three major areas of redistricting. We're gonna talk about the 14th Amendment, what's required under that, we're gonna talk about the Voting Rights Act, then we're gonna talk about traditional redistricting principles. One of the things to start with that I need to emphasize is that 10 years ago, South Carolina was under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, which required preclearance by the Department of Justice. So when you adopted your plan 10 years ago, the Department of Justice, on any plan that's passed in South Carolina, the Department of Justice had to sign off on it, they had to say it was okay. That was both a benefit, that was both a blessing and a problem. It was a problem in the sense that you had to go seek other authority to get approval for your plan, but it was a blessing in the sense that you had somebody with the federal government overlooking it, looking at it, so if somebody wanted to challenge you about your plan, you said, well, the Department of Justice has approved it, so it gave you that level of comfort. You don't have that anymore, with the change in the Supreme Court decisions and that particular section of the Voting Rights Act being ruled inactive, you are now responsible for your own plan. So it is our purpose here to kind of educate you and put more of an emphasis on the things you need to make sure you're aware of, because you don't have that backing by the DOJ, so it's very important for you to understand all these issues. And all what you will be doing is a balancing test, you have a lot of factors that you have to consider, and you have to take all these into account. What fits in Williamsburg County may be a little different in Florence County or Georgetown County. So while we're very good at the state level, looking at these numbers, and we can look at statistics, and we've got statisticians and mapmakers that look at this all day, what really, what we lack from the state perspective is understanding what your local community's all about. It is acceptable, is one of the criteria here, that y'all have to tell us when we're drawing these plans, what are your communities of interest? What is the core of each one of your districts? And we'll talk about some of the numbers here, some of your districts have to pick up people, some of your districts have to lose people. We can look on a statewide perspective and see where those maps are, and where those blocks are, where, how to make that happen, but we don't have as good a feel as y'all do, what's that community? For those of you who have to give up districts, or excuse me, give up population, you know your population base, what makes sense to give up part of that population? When you have to gain population, if you're gaining it from another district, what makes sense for you to gain? That is something that y'all have to take into consideration and help provide advice on. When all this is said and done, what we would appreciate or ask is that we have one person that takes all this from your county council in perspective and share us with the major priorities, and then we will work to develop a plan, we provide you a new plan, you can look at it, you can tell us, you know, how to amend it, and kind of what makes sense to you. So that's the general process here. So to begin with, what I'm gonna highlight here, I want to go into a little bit more detail on page two, is about some of the particular requirements here. The first one is what is one person, one vote? The whole purpose of redistricting is trying to make sure you've got an equal population or almost equal population in each district as compared to the other. So when we say one person, one vote, each person's vote should weigh about the same as it does in another district. On a very simplistic basis, what I'm explaining here is that, let's say you have a district with 100 people and a district with 200 people. Well, those voices of those 100 people count more than those districts with 200 people, because 100 people could elect one person as opposed to 200 people, so those voices aren't the same. Under one person, one vote, you would like to equalize that, put 150 in each district so each voice remains the same. That's the basic principle of redistricting, it's a requirement of equal protection law, equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. The second thing you have to consider is the Voting Rights Act, and you're a little bit different here, because you're a majority-minority county, but you still have to make sure that you, you look at race, you take race into consideration, but you have to balance that with the 14th Amendment. The courts have said you cannot use race as a predominant factor, but the 14th Amendment says you have to consider the interest of the racial minority in the group. With those two, you have to also consider traditional redistricting principles. There are other principles that are in concern here, that you have to make sure the districts are contiguous, you can't split up a district to have part of it in one part of the county and another part of the county, all of the district has to touch each other. We try to make districts as compact as possible, and that depends on the population density, so some are gonna be more, your urban areas are gonna be more condensed than the rural areas, but you try to make sure those districts are compact. One thing you'd like to do is to avoid splitting precincts. I have not seen a county where you could avoid splitting all the precincts, that's just gonna happen, because precincts aren't of equal size, and when you're trying to maintain one person, one vote, you're gonna split some precincts. The goal here is to minimize the number of times you have to do that, but that's just a goal here. As I mentioned earlier, it is certainly a requirement that you look at your communities of interest and your core districts. What are those groups that are most important in your district? Is that a school zone, is that a work zone, is it a church group, is it a neighborhood? What is it? You know, what, you know, is it a city or part of a city or two cities? What I always tell the public when we say that is, the lines have to be drawn somewhere. You're gonna split some group however you decide that, but you try to decide what is the most important part of your district, what are the most important groups that need to try to stay together? You can't make everybody happy, the lines are, we can draw them somewhere, but what is it about those communities, what is the most important in each area that we look at? And then, so we're gonna try to work with you and balance all these criteria on how do you come to a plan that fits Williamsburg County. So to begin with, let's look at some of the statistics here, we have on page three, this highlights the one person, one vote, we have a table here on the left and a chart on the right. So when we talk about one person, one vote, we take your total population divided by your number of districts to get to that ideal district. Now, in your case, you have a prison population. It is our recommendation that the prison population here gets excluded, primarily because of these prisoners cannot vote. The courts have ruled that if you have a, the courts, especially when there's been a high percentage of a district that's a prison population, that's considered a violation of one person, one vote. If you did not exclude, and I know it wasn't excluded last time, I'm not sure why that was done, but in this case, you have a prison that would make up almost 30% of one district. That's a pretty sizable minority, excuse me, that's a pretty sizable group in a district of people that can't vote, and that starts, what the courts are saying, that starts to break apart, that one person, one vote, because you've got almost a third of that district of people that can't vote. So it gives an undue weight to those two-thirds of the people that can. It is our recommendation, but it's certainly to exclude that, but is that a decision of council, when you balance all these factors, what does it mean? So when you look at this, you look at the graph on the left there, you've got District Four, that your, ideally, each district would have about 4,200 people, 42, 44, but you've got some districts that are below that, some that are above it, you've got two districts that are below, all the other districts are above. So you want to try to get closer to that red line on each of these districts as possible. When you look at the table on the left, you have a couple of districts that are way out of whack, for example. District Four is down, they're 23% below the, below the goal, and District Three is 11% above the goal. If you take that range there, that's 33%, 34% of a range, that's called the deviation. The courts have said that you have to be below 10% of that range, excuse me, that deviation or that range has to be less than 10%. So you need to get those districts or all the districts, the simplest way to look at this, you want one district that is no more than 5%, and one district's no more than minus 5%. That's the range there. We recommend trying to have a range of less than 5%. Again, that's a decision for council to make, you may decide because of your communities of interest, you may need a deviation of 8%, like a four and four, instead of a two and a half and a two and a half to get to five. But that is, that's the decision for council to make. The closer you draw it to zero, the closer you keep it to one, the less of a challenge, the less of an argument somebody has to challenge you on that. If you're below 10%, it's acceptable, but it does put you at risk if somebody says, hey, it can be done better. But that's just a decision, we're sharing this information, it's something council has to decide, and you have to balance that deviation with, with your communities of interest and splitting precincts and all these others. You know, some counties are doing this much lower, some cities are doing it too, the Senate, South Carolina Senate adopting their plan, they're going with 5%. But I'm just presenting this to you as an option, which you have to take into consideration. So, you know, in this particular chart, you know, we're saying we recommend taking the prison out, that would make the ideal goal there of about 42, 44. You really see that District One and District Two, you're at 2.7 and 2.1%, there may not be much tweaking that has to do there, but the rest of the districts there, three through seven, there's a lot more work to be done on that. So the goal is, is try to get everybody as close to that 42, 44, it doesn't have to be perfect, but you have to decide what's your comfort level, how close to that do you want to be? We have a graph here showing your current maps, and what's important about this is we've already identified, we identify when we make these maps where the incumbents are, and it's very important to make sure we have your right address, and when I say address, that is not a PO box, that's where you physically reside, that's what the court decisions are based on, domicile is where you, where you sleep at night, where you lay your head in the bed, that's your domicile, and it's our intent to make sure we don't put two people together in the same district, and that's why it's very important to make sure we have your right address up there. So when we're drafting this, it's certainly not our intent to put two of y'all together unless council says we have to for some reason. But, so while we have that there, we just encourage everybody to make sure we've got your right address listed there. So these are statistics we look at when we talk about the Voting Rights Act, again, your county's a little bit different, because you have a majority-minority county here, but when we look through that, you know, we try to keep these percentages about the same, you know, we try not to put too much of a population, white or black, in one district to dilute or enhance their voting strength or crack them apart, so to speak, packing and cracking is the term here. You've got them pretty well spread out, but part of this also depends upon concentration. Your community, in looking at the maps here, seem pretty much intertwined, you don't have solid white blocks or solid black neighborhoods, they're kind of spread throughout. So when we look at this, you've got some majority districts, you get the majority of the seats are majority, majority-minority districts, I don't see a lot of room there to do a lot. Your minority population is 64%, your white population is 33%, so you know, that could kind of, it looks like that's reflecting your council, pretty much, you know, two-thirds, one-third right there. So the Voting Rights Act may be a little bit simpler here, in other cases where it's a little bit more congested, so to speak. But those are statistics. You don't have a large Hispanic population, that starts to appear in some of the other counties, so it's really a, you know, the black-white issue here, you don't have a large Asian or American Indian or some of the other minority groups here. So again, just again, our recommendations are, is that before you draw the first plan, there needs to be some input, and when, before you draw the plan, we need you to adopt a set of criteria and say that we're gonna respect the 14th Amendment, we want a deviation of 5, 10, or 6%, you know, we're gonna comply with the Voting Rights Act. And then, as you go through there, you know, we want to adhere to traditional voting principles, we want to make sure the districts are compact, we want to make sure the districts are contiguous. But again, it goes back to, for defining in advance, the better practice is to define in advance or sharing in advance or hearing from the public, what are those communities of interest? The court decisions I have read, when they've challenged, well, why did you draw the plan this way? Council has said, well, we wanted to keep this, this community together. Well, the court has said, well, you didn't say that up front, that's more like an excuse after the fact. So just to help you as you prepare for your, in case you are challenged, and that's a risk you have to take, but you want to make sure there's as much on the public record in advance before you go down there, because you can say, well, council decided, you know, we wanted to maintain the 14th Amendment with a 10% deviation, and we needed to, we talked about this was a particular community, we need to make sure it got protected there. When you say those in advance and draw your plan around it, it's much more defensible in court. So that's the big picture there, you know, we're, again, we recommend excluding the prisons, you know, we want to make sure everything's contiguous and applies with all the court decisions, and this will be an interactive process. Again, we have some information, you have to decide what's important, we can look at the statistics. We don't, we don't approve your plan, I mean, we're here to guide you and assist you and work with you, but ultimately, it is your plan, and it's what you need to represent to your community on how that works. So, Madam Chair, that's all the questions I have, if there's any questions from council or the public, I'll be glad to answer those at any time.
In the interest of keeping, keeping some kind of order, we will first start with members of council taking questions, followed by, and then our citizens, because I'm sure they have questions to ask this time, members of council.
My first question was on your slide on number, I think that was three, where you talked about the deviation?
Yes, sir.
And that's a, that's gonna be a total that you're recommending of 10% throughout the entire plan?
Throughout, yes, sir. So you, so you're gonna take the high, let's say you don't, you're not perfect, that you need some, some districts have to be a little above, and some districts are gonna be a little below. That range cannot be more than 10%. So, so let's say again, 10%, one district could be 5% over, 1% could be 5% under, the highest and the lowest.
But that's definitely the total for the entire plan?
Yes, yes.
And you said the state went with the 5% deviation?
We're recommending 5%. One, that's what the Senate is using. Two, the way the census created some numbers here, they were interested in differential privacy. On the county level, we think the numbers are good, but on an individual letter, excuse me, on an individual basis, the way they handle the census, those census blocks may not be right, they may be in another precinct or block across the street, which will cause further. So based on the training we received this summer, we said, they recommend going something lower than 10. You know, we think 5 is a good number, but you may say 6, 8. It's a balancing thing when you look at all these other factors, but 10 is the absolute maximum.
And then my other question is about the prison, I'm not sure whose district the prison is actually in, but you said the last 10 years-
District Four.
-that, that prison population was used in this, in the plan?
I was told, I have, I could stand corrected, but I believe the prison-
You're correct.
...was counted in the population and not excluded.
You're correct.
And so our recommendation is they should be excluded, because they're such a large percentage, you're 30% of a district, the court cases I read that ruled it unconstitutional, you had a district that had 35% of its constituents in the prison, and they said that was a clear violation of one person, one vote. But, again, that, that's my recommendation, and I will defer to your legal counsel on how far y'all want to go with that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Supervisor, Mr. Rainwater, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rainwater, my name's Sam Floyd, and I remember Mr. Bowers last time, he's a very pleasant gentleman, I'm sorry to hear he's passed away. The recommendation about the prison is basically my colleague, Councilman Woods', district, who's not here tonight, I wish he were, but he is the most tenured member of this council, and so I will certainly let him address that issue. But I have a question, when the last time that we drew the district lines, I remember that issue came up, but did we have the option at that time of excluding the prison, or was it mandatory by the Justice Department that we had to include it? I don't remember, I remember we included it, but I don't remember why.
I don't remember, I can try to check, our other staff that was with Bobby has left us, so we don't have a lot of institutional knowledge.
Okay.
I can try to find out and help you understand why it was. I know, I know our plans were inconsistent, sometimes they got excluded, some didn't, that's a good point, was there a reason, but I will try to find that out, but I don't have the institutional knowledge to, to share that with you, but I'll try to find out.
It's just a question, and I say that, I, in the 90s, I was fortunate enough to clerk with Congressman Talon in his last term of office, and we were doing redistricting at that time, I was a young college student, myself and Representative Rutherford, who's now the House Minority Leader, worked on his plan, so I've had some experience, but those were old Justice Department rules from 30 years ago, and so I'm sure they've changed a lot, and that, that's just kind of where I was going. If you would, and I think I understand it, but I want to just go through one line for each, I think I understand it, but just in case someone doesn't, of your plan, what all of these, let's just do District One, the first one, what each one of these abbreviations stands for, what you're telling us in this, what it says, just go through, my district's six, but just do District One for, so-
Okay, you're talking about here on page five.
On page, on, just right here, this handout, what we're looking at right here.
Excuse me, ma'am. Okay.
What are those abbreviations, whether it says non-Hispanic, white, non-Hispanic, black?
That's the same information that is on page five-
Okay.
-in the report. So what we have up here is the basic set of criteria documents that's used by DOJ standards for looking at race when you look at that. So on page five here is total population in each district, you've got the number of Hispanics in the second column, you've got the percent that each, of the Hispanic population in each district, so, I'm sorry, you said, let's just go across the District One. So in District One, you have 4,359 people in that district.
Okay, let me stop you right there. What I'm looking at says 4,866 population on this handout on the, at the front of this map.
The plan that Mr. Floyd has came with the thumb drive, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you may not have created that, I don't know if you did or not, it was in my packet for tonight.
This was the packet from 10 years ago.
Okay, and that's what, that's what-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
And that's fine.
You're throwing me off, yeah.
So you didn't actually create that?
No, it was sent over in the original packet, I guess as a comparison.
That was a comparison to what it was 10 years ago.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was asking.
Thank you, they just threw me, I wasn't sure, because I didn't have it with me, and I'm thinking, where did we send that? Yeah, that, that's right, it's 10 years ago.
But it, if you had that, well, anyway, you've answered my question, I just was, and we'll get into that later, what each one of them stands for, I just go, let each one of my colleagues know what we were looking at when we were looking at it-
Yeah.
-because it doesn't have it spelled out, I mean, obviously, I understand it, you know, NH, W, VHP, I think I understand what that stands for.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and go through your example on page five, I think everybody has that.
That'd be good.
So we have the total population, Hispanic, the next one is percentage of Hispanic, the NH is non-Hispanic, white, Hispanic is not a race, Hispanic is an ethnicity. So when the Department of Justice looks at race, you look at white, black, Asian, I'm sorry, I'm getting, white, black, Asian, Native American, and there's one more group, but Hispanic is an, can't even talk now, ethnicity. So then you have non-Hispanic, white, the total number of whites, and the percentage of whites in that district, you have non-Hispanic, black, DOJ, their calculation is 2364, they are 54.23% of that district, and then you've got other races there of 63 for a total of 1.45. Going to the question, VAP stands for voting age population, and that is key when you look at Voting Rights Act, you have to look, not only is the population in a majority, you have to make sure, try to make sure that voting age population is consistent. Having a population, if they can't vote, it's just, it's a backup, you've got to look at that. So all that VAP is voting age population, and that's another thing that just has to be taken into consideration. So when you look at this, the voting age population is 30, 35, 45 in District One, so of the Hispanic, just for example, the Hispanic population, excuse me, the Hispanic race had 69 people, but only 40, 40 of those 69 were voting age.
Okay.
The percent of the voting age population is 1.13, then you get the non-Hispanic whites, 45.81%. So when you compare that to the top column, on average then, the voting age population is a little bit older in the white community, because it's a greater population, it's a greater percentage than the total population. The white, the black population, the voting age population is 1824, so the, so the black population looks like it's a little bit- So the, so the black population looks like it's a little bit younger than the white population because their percentage of voting age is lower than the total population. And then you've got the other races there, too. But yes, thank you for your question. That's another criteria. When you start looking at the Voting Rights Act, Section 2, you've got to look at voting age population as well as total population.
Okay.
So that kind of brings me to another question for, and just looking at District 4, so that prison population was taken out, so that's why that deviation there is so much more significant?
Yes.
All right, I just got a couple more. I don't want to cut in front of all my colleagues and ask all the questions. And I had looked at some stuff prior to coming to the meeting today, and I believe that Section 4-990 is the section that defines how this redistricting is done. It says that all districts must be reapportioned as the population by the county council. So ultimately, it's our decision as to how this is done, but it goes on to say, within a reasonable time prior to the next scheduled general election, which follows the adoption by the state and each federal decennial census. When is the deadline we have to have this done, buddy? You know the date that we have to complete this?
Filing opens March 19th, somewhere around the middle of March. So that would be, that'd be the latest. Obviously, you want people to have time.
Sure.
So, I mean, our goal is trying to help the county to get this done sometime by February.
Okay.
On that, it does take three readings.
Okay.
And that's part of the process up to y'all. Y'all may want to have an initial plan on the first reading and amend it as you go through on second and third reading. You may not want to have a plan, you may want to have a better plan on the first reading. It may take a little bit of time. But it does take three readings. It's an ordinance, just like a, not like a resolution, it's an ordinance. So, you know, the sooner the better. With the delay in the census this year, that's another thing. I mean, normally, the census comes out in April, and we're able to have these conversations in July and August, but now we're in November and close to the holidays, and you don't want to be having public hearings the week before Christmas, so, and Thanksgiving. So you're under a time crunch to hustle this along.
And as you stated earlier, it does say the population variance between defined election districts shall not exceed 10 percent. So that's exactly, you know, that's what it says.
That's the maximum, yeah.
And I was taking a little bit of notes when you were speaking. You said you need for us to pick a point person or persons. Is that right to deal with you?
Yeah, yeah, we'd appreciate, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, no, no, and I'm asking because I spoke with my colleague, Councilman Woods. He's the most tenured council member. I'm the second most tenured council member. He's a minority member. Obviously, you see me. He and I discussed it, and I'd actually drafted a proposal for us to kind of spearhead this, and he was fine with it. I don't know what my colleagues on council think of that. We hadn't discussed it because I didn't know what you were going to present. But at the end of the day, we've got to put together a committee. You would like for us to put together a committee. And then kind of like our budget committee or our bid committee or something, and then we present it to our council along with your guidance, and then we approve it. Is that basically what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it's up to us. We can structure, we can have a two-member or three-member committee, whatever we want to do. I'm asking, is that what you recommend typically?
Yes. However, each county is different, and to me, that's a local issue on how you want to do this. We just need to, our guidance is what the courts have said, you need public input. You need to talk amongst yourself. You know, I don't need to go in the back room and draw something and show it to you. So the point is, y'all need to discuss amongst themselves and then communicate to us what your priorities are for transparency. So again, you're building the record in advance to document this is what council has said is important, and these are the guiding principles that we're going to follow.
And one more thing, and I'm going to let my colleagues ask, I feel like I'm taking up all the time. But the last thing you said was we need to adopt a set of criteria. You, your company, your office would help us in identifying problem areas where other counties have had problems and help us avoid falling into those problems and let us draft a set of criteria that would be legal and presentable and transparent to the public to let them know where we're headed.
Yes, sir.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir. We're actually, your colleagues around the state, other county councils have adopted this, and we have templates to work for. You may want to tweak it again for something that you're there, but we're there to help you.
That's right.
I'm not your attorney.
Right.
But we're here to help point out the pitfalls and to help you try to get it as perfect as possible that can be done.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions, Mr. Rainwater.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we turn it over to the public? All right. Any public or any member of our community that would like to come up, please come to the podium and tell us your district and state your comment.
Hello, everyone. Hope you can hear me. Can you hear me? Thank you, I can hear myself, too. My name is Isaac, first name, last name is Scott. I represent, and my district is District 4. Do you have any thoughts about the Councilman, about area Councilman Wood? Councilman Floyd, thank you, that's part of my question concerning the prison. Now, my question is, in 2010, when the last census was taken in this district, was the prison population counted in that, in that total or the district?
Yeah, we, what
It was?
From what I recall, it was. And that was 10, I think, and I'll let Mr. Rainwater, he's shaking his head, yeah, it was, it was, wasn't it?
Mr. Rainwater. Mr. Rainwater, you say
When we take the prison out of population for redistricting, it does not take it out for aid to subs or any other calculation. You still get that population for any other type of state calculation. This is just for voting purposes to equalize the district. So if I understood his question, you're not going to lose money by taking it out for this. That's a entirely different situation.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
No, thank you. Good question.
Any other questions for our citizens? Come on up.
At large, from different precincts or communities to serve on this group? Or is it just going to be county councils?
I believe that's going to be open to the committee that council puts together. This is their show, pretty much. So whatever they, their input or whatever they decide on how to establish groups, that's how they would, they would do it. So it'd be something that, if that's something that you want to make a recommendation for to members of council, that's probably something that they can at least take into consideration.
So we would have to make the recommendation that we use people from the community. And because what I'm thinking is, once this is done, this is just going to be thrown on the people. And like he said, you can't satisfy everybody, but we need to do the right thing when we trying to redistrict. So it would be good to have members of the community involved.
Any other questions, comments? Come on, Ms.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Supervisor, members of council, Clerk Dakota and the Public Information Officer, Mr. Jeff Singletary. I proudly present myself before you, knowing that we have great representation, and most of all, my county councilwoman, Carolyn Lemon. I am here just to rest assure and enforce you and undergird you because
Hi, I understand.
And I'm just here to let you know that we have your back. We didn't elect you if you weren't capable of making the right decision for the people of Williamsburg County. We are only going to request that you let us know. And if it is, as the young lady requested, let us know so we can let the public know. And when you start doing the redistricting for District Number 7, from which I am, I want you to know that District Number 7 is a district of addition and multiplication. We don't subtract and divide. So keep that in mind when making your decision. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other member, citizen, anyone else? Members of council, are we good? All right. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Officially close the public hearing and begin, and go ahead and call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting, in which Mr. Councilman Wilson will give the invocation.
Let us pray. Eternal Father, our God, we once again come to you as humbly as we know how, just to say thank you. Thank you for, again, for the opportunity to come before you and do the business of this county. We ask you, dear Lord, to look upon this council, look upon this community of Williamsburg, look upon its people. And then, dear Lord, we ask you to give us the knowledge and wisdom to be able to handle the business that we need to for county council. All these blessings we ask in your precious name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. All right, our first order of business is for public hearing, approval for a public hearing and regularly scheduled council meeting that was conducted October 19th, 2021. What is the pleasure of council?
So moved, Madam Supervisor.
Moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. No ordinances tonight, and we do have one proclamation proclaiming Rule Health Day on November 18th in Williamsburg County. What is the pleasure of council?
So moved, Madam Supervisor. Second.
Any discussion? Do we have anyone here? Hearing none. All those in favor of proclaiming Rule Health Day on November 18th in Williamsburg County, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. The next order of business is under the county supervisor's report. As you all know, last week I came, I spoke, last council meeting, I spoke about the request that was made for our Williamsburg County staff to have an additional day off for the Christmas holiday celebrations. Those day celebration, those days included, December 23rd, 24th, and 27th. Council already gives county government two days off. They asked for an additional day, and that day, I believe, is the 27th. So at this point, I do want to know what the pleasure of council is so that we can get the word out to our county team members. So we need a motion.
The motion, is it an extra day?
Yes, sir.
So moved, Madam Supervisor.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of allowing for the extra day for the Christmas holiday, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. Our next order, and this is under the supervisor's report, Ms. Anita James would like to present something. Come on up, ma'am.
Hello, y'all.
Hello.
This weekend, Friday night, I sent out, well, Ben had sent out messages and informed people regarding about my Mardi Gras masquerade ball. And it was for to give a donation towards the disabled people in the community. And seeing that I had some leftovers that weren't there, I would like to present, well, for supervisor with our bag saying, Sartre's and Lane's Masquerade Ball 2021. And to Ms. Tammy, yes, because you're such a sweetheart, Tammy, I swear, you are. You are. So I did want to take a picture. I'm going to put it in my drawer.
There you go. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, we need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. Thank you all, members of council, Williamsburg County citizens.